The order wrote off.
Mark?
Here.
Erica?
There.
Jeremy is absent. Mike?
Here.
And C?
Here.
And JJ is absent.
All right, I'm going to make the proof of pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Most gracious, have we called on you. Thank you. Put me on. Put me on the top floor. We pray that you be with us this week and tonight, if you call those present. I pray, Lord, that you look up to you that this land is held in civil manner. This is conducted in a way that you know, this will be gathered with the council.
First item on the agenda is to approve tonight's agenda. Do you think I know there's amendments or requests?
More quickly, stormwater situation.
Say it, Dr. Connor. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve as a missing?
So.
Got a motion by Mark. Go ahead, second. Second by Erica. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, and that is approved. Next item on the agenda is the June twenty-fourth meeting for minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Got a motion by MC. Do I hear a second? Second by Erica. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign. That's approved. Next item is financial reports. On the city financials, I'm going to ask that the paper leads from on your map. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion by MC, second by Mike. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign. That's approved. Next item is the water insurance financials, and I'm going to make the same request there. Do I hear a motion? Okay, got a motion by Mike. Do I hear a second? Second by MC. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, and that's approved. Next item is department reports. Byron?
I'm prepared to add the other things with water loss. We've cleared here was some calls and parts that were being planted. First part is a high, and then several quarters, we had several parages, four considered there. Any questions, number four, do you? Have they, uh, given a time, you know, start building that hole? I can't look at it, but I like, uh, those guys, uh, like any work out.
We're not going to, we're not going to, yeah. We're not going to, we're not going to. That was dirt and saw.
Yeah, they're good, but they don't pull the ground out of it. Then the fire order was to make the size fall, so that the water would go out.
Any other damage? Any other damage from the flood?
Yep. They came out from their board, and we put a water leak in on Washington side, and she's kind of, we're right there.
Thank you, next. Next is police.
Aside from what you, the stats that you have there, obviously, the fire departments at the rain, we're all out, I can't count on that. Never seen anything like that. Been through all the other floods that have passed. This one just came, came, as soon, as fast as it came in, it left. Creepers and everything went down so fast, like there were several rivers blocked. One police department out of us, got stuck out in the low end, and it blew it up. And then, cars like out there, and there, you can't subvision out there, cars. Cars that, one end of the subdivision ended up. Auto- or unflailing, all twisted up, truck washed down. So it was a lot of vehicles getting towed, changed a couple of tires for some people. Down here in south of town, like David Con, the magistrate, there was huge, huge rocks in the road. And the water recessed, we got like a drive over them. One woodcar had three tracks. And so, we couldn't help him very much, if we give him a record, but, uh, he had to change a couple of tires, and thankfully, no names hurt, and we got through that. But you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Next is planning commission report.
Good evening. So the planning commission, obviously, met last night. You know, we're having all these off months with the starting up, but we had to, first on the meeting earlier in the month, so we kind of had a double meeting yesterday. But the planning items that, you know, I've looked at previously was preliminary flat for the Trillium subdivision. This one was a table. We still got a few items outstanding on this we want to work through. So we're still kind of working that engineering design. The track split for also the Trillium development company, this is a different piece of property. Angular property. Planning commission voted unanimously to approve that lot split last night. We have a replat for Harper State Stockton Properties, this is down on Peep and Raving. This was taken a two-plus acre property, it's seven dollars one, and splitting it into one acre parcels. No reason, anything meant for twice of it. Ranch subdivision, we've been working on this preliminary flat, we've had a request for the table by the applicant. They got the engineering comments back from blowing and our staff comments, and so we're kind of working through all of those requested changes and all that fun stuff. We have a lot split for J C D Properties, this is on Peppergrass path, this is, uh, part of the Scissor Cell subdivision where a lot was combined, two lots combining into one. And the applicant that currently does a request to take it back into two original lots that was preliminary flat in the Sucker Rogers. So that was also approved. And then we've got a lot line adjustment for Dancing Rabbit, all of those are acres. They had three tracks on this piece of property. One of them currently has a home on it. There was another one that was about three acres, because they ended my tool acres, and they're kind of moving the three acre and the tool acre closer to the same sizes. So just a line adjustment there, and a new lots. And then, of course, we had the master tree planning future land use plan update last night. And the planning commission voted unanimously to affirm land recommissioned council. Approved that last night, so. And then on your two city council, you know, is all we have is the M S P and the future land use maps that we have out to discuss. And then the work session I remember we had last night was a rezoning, which is a P Z D concealed payment engineering project up on Ford and two sixty-four. They've submitted, more than, resubmitted their zoning packet, and so we're going to kind of continue through that process. You know, looking at the property, you know, what they want their zoning to look like, things like that. We have a track split for Osage Meadows Development. This is the one I think in Wallace, where it tees into one twelve on the west side of one twelve. And they are working on all of the preliminary flats up in that subdivision and developmental project. They also have a large track, it's commercial on one year, that they're wanting to split off to go ahead and kind of expedite some of the old money yet. And it's not affecting their preliminary flat to have on the rest of the property. And then we have two other items that are mostly for update with planning commission. Kind of just like we were at Seinfeld and planning for a large mixed-use project on the northern end up here. It's been about a year since the applicant submitted that, and got their conditional approval. We've been working through engineering, you know, stat comments and stuff, and that time went down, and they submitted another round submissions. Engineering's looking at it right now, I'll bring it back to them. And then the Scissor Cell preliminary flat, they submitted their updates with point of view, quality of work, utilities, and some of the other items that they've worked on. So kind of a update with planning commission on that. Both those items will require any action from the commission, it's kind of a general talk to them, but that's important. That is all that I have for the planning commission updates. Obviously, we have the master street, I don't know if you can get this on, any questions?
Let's go. Next item is the June water insurance, department report.
Will, you want to come forward? And if you want to go over to report again, I just want to say that we've seen a rain that all the blocks went down from this one. So that's a good friend, just go this.
So looking over the open water wars, as you can see, we have five open right now. Instead of making a building, we just had to make out the box, so. The sewer main extension, we're waiting on a three designation, that is signed today. So we'll be able to run that as soon as we get, break our schedule, so probably, it'll be early next week. So something interesting, we had two taps that we suspected were leaking on Main Street. We dug up one, and took this about seventy feet worth of leaking, blinded. And in that process, we uncovered three of the joints where the pipes actually connect. All of those had water sitting around them, but they weren't actively leaking. So what that indicates to me is it's a pressure leak, so tonight, we're going to do some more pressure of the pipe builds, and then we'll see. And that's towards the dead end down at the end of the street, which subsequently, we also have really high pressure down there. And so that, I actually figured out a map, you know, that's about one mile of the pipe line that's likely to be, that goes through the other ways. Which could be a significant source of water loss. The good news is when R dot comes through and it picks that line, it'll destroy that, which is. Still investigating one other tap that we suspect is leaking, and we're still working on handling. Street, we have a hole in a line later than around, we just have to wait three more taps, and then pour those surface lines to the meters. And then pour it in the pressure test, and we'll track that property.
All I have, no questions?
Thank you for calling our board. I know with my neighborhood, there was a significant water leak, and you guys are out there getting that fixed. I mean, that morning, so that's fully repaired, that looks like, correct?
Yes, and that one is actually interesting because the S A D broke, and so that's probably been the concern for years, based on the damage to the S A D. Not sure how it got skipped over for the empty report, but that's likely to be a blow right here, based on what we saw. So that was significant, we got.
Your response, my name is, I was thinking of your current, thank you.
Do you have water damages in the?
No. In our buildings? Sorry.
Did you dug the gravel out of the water bridge?
Yes, I don't like the difference, you dug that out, I got.
I have one more question. With all the things that we approved, with the water loss and trying to look big, I have to ask you one more question. When is that those project, when do those projects start, to be looking at pressures and those things that we approved?
It's already been before, you approved it at the last meeting, and we'll be forward to further.
Oh, so it's, okay, good. All right, thank you so much.
I think we need to, it should be done by December.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Next is engineer's report.
I'm going to piggyback on the water insurance, just a couple items you've got to notice in front of you from the water insurance meeting, it was held last week. One thing to note, everything is generally on water side unchanged from the last meeting. But we did receive approval from A U Q today on culture plan associated with plan number one, plan number two, place water treatment plans. So we can move forward with removal of the sludge, layer, and handling of the Eastman's group agreement out with the label. So that would be in the report elsewhere. Also, your packet, I was prompted for informational purposes, the other drawing to the public works and storage improvements, I don't know if you're talking about. We're at the water to yard, if you will, and several pages in there, including the packet that I put in front of us as well. As far as the other engineering items, really no change on the current project from the last, uh, last month's report. We are prepared to talk some more about the brand, the chair had asked us to show some videos, but since that was added to the ending agenda, we just want to wait until, I don't remember, I discuss that.
Actually, there's people here to do public comments on that. I didn't, I didn't know, so we had, because they were asking about that. And you said that you covered it in damage reports, so it's going to have Brentwood to it, so. Is that okay for you here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So that lady can say her public comments, and kind of just take their time, and then.
Okay. Well, as we all know, you may be able to speak up as well, from, I don't know the exact amount of rainfall that fell specifically here in Cape Springs, where the jobs line is separated, it's a, and then over a three-year or three-hour period, five to half inches of rain fell. And so we were just equating, I know it was at least that amount, based on reports that I've heard. And I'm aware of my refrainage, and try to understand what type of region are we looking at. Over the three-hour period, it would be in excess of one hundred year rainfall. Or another way to say that is have probability, or one percent probability of happening at any given time. So that's kind of the size rainfall here that we were looking at. I'll start off, would you like to start off with photographs? I've got three photographs that you sent here.
Photographs would be great, so they can sort of come to my capital, I don't want to make sense to exactly where this is. Brentwood fence along Burney was just replaced, so it was going to be there in that property for the second week pictures. That's looking at the property here, it's, the water's coming in from Brentwood, it's the connections around us, and also the handles and ends. But the first picture shows the amount of water coming in, the box, so we might say it's above again, the draw, the back fence that's broken right there, one of those fence panels, and my three fence panels all the way down Burney, so five of them. And I've studied the crossings here, who has this picture?
All right, and if we're looking generally south here, the water flowing in south, Burney is located on the other side of the spins, right?
So that's the water that crosses two sixty-four, hits that empty lot, and comes into Brentwood. So that amount of water, this is my concern, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to take an even healthier road here, even though my property was damaged. My concern is, I read somewhere, and we took Jordan's Fair Creek script, if I'm wrong, it only takes four inches of water to wash away a car. We are so blessed that we did not have, with a car being on board, because that much water is crossing two sixty-four. How does R dot, R dot not do anything, or, or say something to hold, putting all of this on us? This doesn't even include when they implement our detention plot, the detention plot, we were close so much, it may have crossed, crossed a creek and divided six houses up there. Three houses took on water, but Brentwood is not meant to drink the whole, but I just wanted the council to see. And this landowner is here, so I'm speaking, I'm not somebody who's got this landowner. We are really blessed, we don't have a car in our burden of water. And then, um, where it comes over. And there's, so, so you can see it goes beyond that property, I understand, see, they extended it, and that's that land next to the lot, and I know it's a little bit, so it's, it's the whole problem, it's over a million dollar case, which is absolutely ridiculous, right? And in another town, which we've already talked about, my thing is getting a retard, it's slow flow, because as it is rushing in, it's not a washing car, eventually, it hasn't happened yet, and it's caused so much damage. Although, the fighting thing is, has a constant, um, safety. And then, and then you can see the videos of how much it's rushing. And it was worth taking from my property. Because you can see the whole of it is. And it caused more property damage on the property, a little bit now, that incident is dug up under their plants. And they're about to lose their fence, just like I did the first time before I was on council. So that's looking, you can see all the way up, one, two, two houses, that is where the water comes in. But the sheer velocity of it, and the amount, I don't know how, we can't take a different approach to slow water, or things like that. And granted, since that off stock is put in, I haven't seen the trail was there, because the oxygen's come back and filled my hole again after it settled. But I haven't seen water in that yard, the off stock is doing its job, but I have this happen. But then, with the loss of it, I wanted to hopefully see, and I wanted to talk about it at the council, if you did. And I totally don't have that, that would be the possible vacation line I have to watch out.
I know, okay, sorry.
So that, that was my whole, my whole point, because I know multiple boarders are here to talk to as well, and I'm not going to say their comments. This is just my one big council comment, as I would say, with any of your comments to me. Because I don't have one monetary question.
My next tour name is, is the church of Christ, I'm just going to have, um, college, college, this is hard. I've got a friend that I go to church with, he lives in the subdivision, it's in, in Rogers, actually, as my understanding of it. But it's across from that detention lot on that second base, and built that big hole to, 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 all that water from up the hill, come down, build that, pick up within three feet of this house. Pushed up with a fence, and running down that creek. The main problem, or the core of the problem I see is building in subdivision. Once you begin in there, you destroy all the grass, and I know people walk in there. There's, there's no way to stop the runoff. This may be a one, one hundred year flood, or one, one hundred years, but we have one full year's, okay? So we've got to be prepared for these things, and that includes cleaning out these wet weather creeks down here. I've brought that up before, I know you're talking about private property, but something's got to be done. I don't care what it is, it's got to be fixed. Safety of our citizens is number one, and property, to me, anyway. I don't know about the rest of it, but that's the way I feel.
There is one more concern about this, and Brentwood, if that land on the other side of two sixty-four is developed, where is it going to dump all the water? They're going to dump it like river, because I'm sure we've got some river, river in the water in there too, because under two sixty-four, a twenty-foot crosses two sixty-four. So is that something that people keep on, saying, keep on their radar, to make sure they're forming, I don't know how that works, this is not our topic. But I don't want them to flip on Brentwood.
Probably have the same thing. Yeah, to give you, you know, how they, how your drainage may, will set up conveyance structure to the public route. So we have the pines, box, culvers, everything that's placed across the road, to the long road, those are designed for a ten year rainfall. Invade that rainfall. Anything in excess of that should flow down the street, generally speaking, in a public environment. The tension ponds are designed for maximum of one hundred year rainfall. So part of the series is we're going to make a determination, if you want to make adjustments to your drainage. As generally customary with those rainfall events, what we have, or what we see in this area and beyond, what are the things we do consider as we review those developments? We do know where the challenges are, the greatest challenges are, when those developments go in, that has to be taken into account. The developments will take that into account, whenever they're designing those, those improvements. Generally speaking, same or not, they have a rainfall that they designed to, they're not planned to design a two hundred year rainfall. So it's going to be very difficult to manage those type of situations, an extreme situation.
But we've had two, for me.
That's great, and that's, as I was saying, it's on average, one percent chance, if you look at it in that, one percent chance.
We're just like, somebody died, and one percent chance. Their place got flooded.
Extremely, extremely.
They washed pieces of their, of their.
It was unnecessary, I mean, that's the thing.
The halls are pieces of pillow that you had washed down in the footers.
I mean, we have trees that I've been begging the council to either clean it, let me clean it, R dot clean it, somebody clean it. But this would not have happened if the culvers and those creeks that you were mentioning were cleaned up. If that would have been cleaned out, it could have went through, and now we've got R dot that's looking at that culver, because it has buckled up on one twelve. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. But it has buckled that, that culver, it's buckled on top, and it has washed down on both sides of that culver, where that water had rushed over the top of the highway. So they were sitting out there today, inspecting it, and they were out there on Friday as well. So I don't know if that's a city problem, it could be.
It's a, R dot promptly dis.
But the blocks, if we have to repair that, if R dot has to repair that, that main thoroughfare through Cape Springs, it's going to be a problem. So I, I would like to know what they're planning on doing. So I know that the censums have called as well, because it flooded their metal building out across the street, bad, where Norman were looping it up. I've asked the council, I've asked.
Ken, I only called one time, to be honest, that you asked, and that was like a month or two ago. I, and I, we heard you, and it was pressed on to the mayor. So I've only heard you ask once, and I thought everything was taken care of, but maybe we should have gone with that.
And I went out and looked, and it was on the R dot, right at the mouth, the tree that I found was at the, the large one was right there at the mouth of the, uh, of the R dot, uh, box culver, and I reported it to R dot, and it's, it's on them. And the private, the rest of it is private property. If you want to clean it, you can, city can use, uh, public finance court.
But we were told we could, that's the thing.
You, you told me that we had to get a, from court. You, you told me that we had to get it over here from court engineer.
I said that we can't as a city and the engineers say that when we do stuff on, on there, we have to go to court engineers. I don't know if individuals do or not, do you?
As far as individuals, I don't know, but the permitting process goes, does it give this pounding, we would have to, uh, look at SWF. There's a potential that you would have to go further on the permitting side.
And that would be if it was already in our, in our, uh, project because it was in our prop, our, our property.
So somebody dies in a flood, who gets blamed for that?
The property owners are responsible for taking care of their, their ditches, if I understand that right.
But is a creek, a creek considered a ditch?
It is, it's a, whether you call it a creek or a ditch, they're responsible for their own, they, the city can't go on to private property and use city funds to benefit private individuals. Am I wrong in that?
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's a difficult situation because you have, uh, you know, if, if, if there is a threat on a, on a piece of property that's going to immediately hurt somebody, uh, the, uh, city has to call police powers to protect, help safety well. On the other end of the spectrum, uh, cities can't improve private property. You can't go on private property and, and improve, can't do, go on somebody's property, prune trees or, uh, you know, clean out drains and those sort of things. So this is something that sort of falls in between. Mike reached out to me, um, last week about this and we had a discussion on the phone. But we understand your frustration because we have something which we feel is contributing to, to the issue. It may not solve it, but certainly having some contributory effects. And so I told Mike, um, that I was going to do a bit of a survey in some other cities in Arkansas that have gone through some fairly significant flooding issues. Hot Springs being one of them, uh, that, uh, put in some more rigorous standards. I was going to look and see what type of regulation they have on cleanup requirements. Try to get in, uh, some of those to bring back to the August work session, uh, so we can take a look at those and see, see what type of things could we do.
And I know that with hot springs, when we were looking at, at a drainage utility, they did that. They're one of the cities that have drainage utility and they have gone on, or they have had a lot of the drainage areas dedicated to the city's, which is city property. So they can go on, tell me, clean it up. They've got huge, uh, tax structure and they spend a lot of money that frankly, we don't have. But, uh, when you look at it, it was very important to develop like five cities in the state as, um, that none of them's small. Well, that's, then, can you go over those stats again that we, we just, we mentioned all that, do you have a combination interest in, how fast?
What was reported by contractor X and Y is five and a half inches over a three pound here. If I look at your drainage man, it's weight, uh, to a one hundred year rainfall, it would be five, one, one, six inches, uh, in that same time. So it's in excess of a one hundred year rainfall.
Has that like been told?
Yes.
I've been in this city since nineteen ninety-two, I have never seen this, you know, why? Because we have a store of the management like I'm having it implemented at a different, I don't think I'm implementing it directly. That is my opinion and if you, if the more subdivision, I'm in business, I'm in real estate, there's a lot of subdivision. But if you put subdivision, it's without implementing this full water management like it should be answered. Having it and designing it is one thing, implementing it is another. I don't need any implementation is there. We just like what is public water and I'm going to say that, uh, not because it's my property, it's next to the public water. That public water, uh, any of the building is in a flood zone. He just asked Phil and he said it wasn't flooding. My place that's next to it is not in the flood zone and he got flooded, do you know why? My understanding is because when the water bridge was adjusted, they erased it, they put a small pipe in it, that pipe can not, and then the pipe gets, as soon as they came and cleaned it, the water just start going. So we can, we can blame everything we want to blame, but we have to be honest with ourselves and start looking at what can we do to change it instead of, okay, it's in one hundred year, I don't care one hundred years, please, two hundred years, what can we do to improve it? Why is it that the place that's not in flood zone, it flooded, the one that at least is not? Is it because they're building on it, are you necessarily disturbing the land and then the water comes to the lake? And I asked that and I brought that to Mr. Mayor, uh, offices of what, uh, Kim said one time or whatever, they said, I think I have brought that. They moved it to, to the council all the years and it doesn't matter, I, I mean, I, it's my property and I don't want it. I don't want to be taking advantage of city community, but at the same time, my God, I have had damage thousands of dollars again. I got my phone, but I never had water coming in, they took the barns. I mean, I had at least thirty, forty thousand dollars damage, if you come, well, I show it to you, I think my friend, he saw it, he saw it. It has never happened and then Weldon's assistant just back coming and cleaning that hole, it started. Designing that small hole was not right for me, I was there, I don't think you guys fixed that. If you don't fix that, and after I'm asking this time, I'm not like you, we need you, we need the city, Mr. Mayor. Then how, how can I, how can the rest of the folks that are here have the comfort level in the count, with the city council that they're going to take care of? We can say it easily, but a lot of water that came in was there that was washed down from that face who was coming down. You can go in there, stay in the oil, go oil break, you can go there and look at it. Because what do we do before they start to stop the water? Do they run a detention park, do they break the ground and then? Those are things that we need to look at and see how we can improve it. Honestly, there is room for improvement, we need to look at it. We're not in the same smart city that there was like a thousand people, five hundred people and it's getting bigger. We have more subdivision in there, so we need to look at the store water management, see how can we improve it? And how can we implement it and making sure it's getting enough? We love the builders and at the same time, we want to make sure we don't lose other folks that are been here for long time, that, you know, they're paying for it. So I knew that whole water break there, that's a good example of what is not right. Uh, I'm going to say it until it's fixed.
Good. I mean, I think I asked for them to stay on updates, I recall correctly, Broad Street?
Up Broad Street.
Yeah, that's your street, right?
Yeah.
I think I asked for it to stay on updates until it was resolved. It's not on updates. I recall seeing that.
As we're writing to, uh, and call adopter of drainage, uh, back in, uh, several years ago. Not a lot has been built to that new comprehensive drainage that, uh, you're on. We have had some, a lot of areas that we're talking about, not regularly attributed to that specific drainage. So we'll see some improvements I can make from here and see how, how strange that one's made with here. I can also come by, take a look at the homes they're giving, have the water in them compared to the floodwater, as starting points, to see where that, what that looks like.
I just want to make sure the implementation or if it is done like we do, we need to look at it, how do we implement it? Who's checking it? Who's making sure it's done right? Is it something after it's done, we're not going to say, okay, it's done? Or are we having people go through the section, make sure? Because we have so much subdivision, there's so much land that's going to be saturated, there's no room for it to go. How are we going to deal with that? These are things that we owe it to our citizens to do it, I really think so, it's fair, I forget about me, forget about my land, forget about my house, leave it to everybody else. And if somebody gets hurt, one person, because we didn't do our job for anyone else, and I feel guilty myself.
We have the Hillcrest one, that was a prime example of using the drainage manual and it didn't, it, well, it didn't pop up. It didn't go in, in homes where waters we can put on homes, it should have been put on homes. And also if we put on burnout, where I don't agree with you, we can put on burnout. So I think there's, there's more to that.
Anything else?
One, I do have one more question. It is obvious that my development is already flooded, it's already flooded, is there anything to do? Is there any different approach on the water, on the areas that are being flooded that the city can do to, to help mitigate? Well, especially the rapid, the rapid flow of water. Because before we just looked at a pit, is there anything?
Well, probably the easiest thing to look at is come from, uh, first of all, this, you have a budget, uh, which you may improve and we can look at and try to determine what can be done. Tip in when you look at drainage, I'm conscious you need to be careful. You can start downstream and work your way upstream. You start building in the middle of the project, boy, you start with upstream side, you stand a chance of just moving the bottom just further to the south. So you have to calculate the manner in which you do those improvements so you don't do a problem or increase the problem downstream.
Well, it's already increased downstream because Hillcrest is not putting water on burnout, whereas you can have Hillcrest support, so, um, I don't know.
I have a question. There's an Arkansas law that says we cannot change the management of our, is that how we do subdivision?
Well, with the subdivisions, um, I think we can all agree that there is more water. You put rooftops and pavement, there is more water. Reasons for that, the tension ponds just release that water at the maximum rate it was created. So it's just going to last over a month or a few times. You have more water after, more volume, you're just not releasing it in any fashion, that's the design of one of the tension ponds.
Anything else? Attorney.
Remember, uh, the, remember the items, uh, that was on my list we're going to talk a little bit about. So, uh, I'll mention that, uh, I'm coming in the August work session. Uh, we have the board of advisors, uh, knock shop, police, B one, franchise offices, liquor license, liquor tax, uh, organs. Talked a little bit about all those in the last work session. I told you I'll be working on, uh, how great the draft of the, uh, liquor license and tax and also bringing for the revised franchise offices. And C is going to assist with some advice on, uh, knock shop links. So that will all be having for, uh, at the work session, we got another week. Uh, so that's good, we got a lot of preparation to talk about this for you. Otherwise, I was, I was also going to mention what Mike and I had talked about on the drainage. I'll have some, kind of give you some information for, uh, to the work session on that as well. With the, uh, last thing, uh, golf course, uh, determination of the lands, uh, getting covered that is. So are there any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Porter, Sheriff's Report.
I don't have anything, the council has questions about my financials.
Next, time is Mayor's Report. And I didn't formally prepare anything tonight, but during the, the flood the other night, my mother-in-law, uh, that's like trying to buy some water and she claimed we got over five inches in about an hour and a half. But regardless, it was a lot of rain, we had water in a lot of places. I'm interested to come up to the city hall and go out and see a little bit of the damages, see the guys in action. Was really impressed, we had state police, uh, the county sheriff's office, uh, did see an ambulance go by a time or two. And I saw a couple of trucks I didn't quite expect from, uh, the, uh, Black National Guard out here. And then in addition to that, I.
There was a Hyphal PD there.
That was what?
It was Hyphal PD.
Oh, Hyphal PD?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there were two or three of those with strange lights and the tan colored that were large trucks. And, uh, then we, I did see some of our firefighters in action, the police officers for K Springs in action. And there was a lot of work going on in a hurry. I, I got home at two thirty, I know a lot of these guys got home at five or later. And there were vehicles being pulled out, there were people being helped and, and all, from all the different departments. And they all came together, worked together well and it was really impressive to see. It's a shame they were put in the position and it's a shame that we had such a huge, uh, rain event. But at the same time, it was really good to see the guys in action, great job they did, so thank you. And, uh, next time is public comments. Anyone? State's remain and, uh, where you live.
My name is Peter Smith and I live over in the Brentwood subdivision. Uh, so about four years ago, we got to speak to the council on this as well. We have, uh, as the pastor America had mentioned, um, with all the flooding coming through. About four years ago, we had a mushroom top, uh, the drainage put in there. And it's helped some, but we have what we call a river that comes through our backyard. Councilor America mentioned, comes over from Lowell, comes through, uh, our neighbors behind us, through their yard, through our yard, into Erica's yard and then back to the street into Lowell. We call those rivers and we've had, we've been in that house for five years. We have about six rivers come through the backyard house. As Councilor Mike said, two hundred year bins within four years. I mean, that's, it, it, it's hard to quantify that. And because we have those rivers coming through, we can't do things like, uh, like landscaping. We can't put any, uh, 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 city plates or permit because it'll probably get washed away. Our leave service and lawn service, um, washed away. Uh, flower beds, uh, anything landscaping that way washed away. We had to replace our fence now, the one that connects to Erica's yard. This week, the second time in four years, we've had to replace the same fence. I honestly, I, I don't know what to do anymore, uh, I don't know what, what approach to take. We tried going to Lowell, excuse me, the, the city of Hays, tried going to the city of Lowell saying, will you help us? Can, is there anything you can do? The water's coming from your city into our city and wrecking, you know, the residents' property. Is there anything that you can do? And they basically said, in so many words, not our city, not our problem. So at this point, I, you know, you know, we, we mentioned all the, the, you know, the issues, yes, to personal property, anything like that. But now we're looking at it from a safety perspective too. By in that little neighborhood, we have river flows through, uh, we have children, grandchildren. Yes, this was a terrible, terrible, hopefully once in a lifetime flood because we've never seen rain that high. But because we keep getting those rivers through our backyard, um, pets, small children, if anybody steps a foot out there, they're washed away. They're washed into the ravine that dug out into, uh, Erica's yard. And in that fact, it's, it does that unlabelage on, we know there's a problem, we know what's coming from Lowell and nothing is happening about it. So, um, that's, that's all I'm saying, but, uh, again, I encourage the city to take some sort of additional measures now to, for safety purposes for, uh, the. for, uh, the, the sake of our, our homes and our property, to try something else. Because what we've tried so far has not worked. And yes, we know that these are terrible once in a lifetime floods, but we have now had multiple of those floods. And the solutions we tried before are still working.
Thank you. Next.
My name is John Montgnaud, I live on Brown Road. And Randy, we've spoken a few times on Green Road, we bought a house back in June twenty sixteen. We're on the trail off our street, Lobos House, on the road. And, you know, we talked about this one percent chance to score the better than here. I have full barriers on the property, even flood, this is the third time that I've had water in my house. And even on moderate rainfall days, and I have videos going back to twenty seventeen, of standing water against my garage doors, up against, uh, the house, this last one. I had two feet of water races out of the house. And I'm not in a flood zone, I look at the field, I have my original degree, it's emergency management. And so I know the proof of this stuff, went to go buy a house, you know, there's nothing you can do about it, buy a house. And even my neighbors who have been there, except for two thousand and three, I've never seen a lot of right. And only changed since then, the amount of development that's been going on in these bridges. And so basically, in my driveway, my neighbor's driveway, only two quadrants, I was sloping down the hill instead of towards the street. And of course, the only drainage ditch on the streets on the west side of the house, which gives about two percent of water. The other one, I understand, comes on the east side, which goes across on the other side. Into my driveway, comes down the east street. It comes down my driveway, into my house, into my front door. Um, one of my neighbors back there, of course, he lived with us, about ten forty five, I thought that I helped me control the flood. And we were calling me, everybody, but I was outside the neighbors house, still in the building. So at one point, I had, all I could find was a four inch, four inch drainage tube. That at, at us, I was trying to float water from the street, so it would play a piece of the driveway, trying to burst some of the water. Some of them, actually, who were grabbing anything, everything they could find to try to dam under the water. And at one point, um, I kind of got worried, because I was in front of my garage, with one of my, uh, one of my competitors. And both black were cracking on this. And I did a shock frame, not knowing what's wrong with me. And I put it in my air conditioning unit, and I got, one of my neighbors was about, almost six inches away from the water. Um, but it was, it was enough of a chill. I was worried that my neighbor back there, my wife, and a lot of my neighbors, maybe they got across our driveway with the black. We were out there in the middle of it, just trying to save the house. And I finally got to the point where the water was inside the outside. I lost, just come inside, come around inside, and I didn't get out. But, uh, and I felt like that seemed like I had to, to couple of laying on the head of the water, just coming in. So I'm in this situation here. I've already torn out drywall, shrunk, and thrown out carpet, or, or closet, or master bedrooms. Third time I'm in this, and it's just water coming off the street. And even moderate rainfall, and like I said, I have videos going back years, showing the same thing when I've had a body. I had a company, and I thought that rebuild my fences, put half of the house, water from that, and create my, easy, it's easy. Uh, water flowing right through my house, even in this storm, I was in the face of this. So I don't know what needs to happen, but Randy, I talked to you, this was probably around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. He told me that the engineer said it's gonna be a hundred and two thousand dollars to fix just my block. And I realized that sounds unsophisticated, it's my problem. But I said, all right, I said, no, let's fix it. Because it's not my responsibility to deal with the street runoff. Because the storm drain was at the house in top of the system, it doesn't matter for a buck. They said, like, we street is so rotten, I had to, uh, my dead, and it was turned to half of it. Dirt, concrete, rocks, so the place was missing. We had about twenty five pound block of cement that was moved by that water, about seventy five pounds. Um, once, you know, in that lightning strike happened, and I was kind of worried that, okay, that's it. And I said, I, I got up enough to go look to see if anybody was laid out dead across my driveway and my wife. And I thought to myself, my wife is up there too, so God forbid, white and dead, we all die. My little girls come outside, I said, that five women, they were just sweating, they were. So it was coming down hard enough that even I was on my hands and knees, I was starting to act as shit. So that is, I should understand why, from the bridge, what it was, why the bridge was allowed to go on the driveway, considering the way that it just puts all the water down on our property. And, uh, like I said, I've been there with this since we bought the house in twenty sixteen, I put the price against that first spring, it's only about twenty seven feet, also. And so it's a bad situation, I've hung down my fence three times, trying to put out more water and runoff. So I don't know what I'm gonna do besides get a determining law for something, because this is changing. I'm in a neighborhood, not in a flood zone. And like I said, the one thing that's changed is just all the ability to evade, uh, that subdivision that exists when the house was built. Here, the creek didn't exist when the house was built. So now there's nowhere for any of that water to go, besides my neighbor's property across the street from us. I can see the river that runs down his property. And then all that water that's already on the street is adding on to that, and they're coming, going over. There's nothing I can do about it. And my flood barriers, even that six hundred pounds of P S N, it was fully inflated, that couldn't stop anything this. And like I said, this, he says a hundred year rainstorm, or one percent chance we get that. This has been every year, every year. I mean, I've had first responders try and pass my house in the middle of the flood, while carrying sandbags going up there. And no one even stops to help. We had one guy, one of the staff, say, hey, we need some of this, yeah, my house is flooding. Just come back and scarlet, like, all right, pretend it's serious. Um, so I don't know what I'm expected to do. I mean, I can't sell the house. And if a fucking river floods, must do it. I've had so much damage in there, like, how am I gonna sell this? I can't move, of course, I'm waiting. I don't know what I'm expected to do. I, I can't, I'm not an engineer, there's only so much I can chop up my property to try to manage this water. The only thing I think to do is tear it through with myself, start adding channel that I can run down to somewhere that's useful, besides my property. That might not be the goal, but that might be the next step. So I don't know, guys, I need some help. I need some help. Like I said, I'm not in flood plain, I realize, you know, I thought round the road was supposed to be widened at some point. Uh, apparently that job was taken over by the highway department, they're known for their speed. So I don't know at what point round road is going to be straightened into that. One point, Randy, I know we had talked about once, round road was widened and straightened, that, y'all, I'm trying to get to my issue. But since that job was put off to the highway department, now I'm just kind of turning left here and then over. And what I've had, I've had my own engineer come out, you guys, someone has come out a few years ago to tell me what, or at least to give ideas of what can be fixed. I don't know what to do at this point, other than start taking matters in my own hands, start chopping stuff up, start, I don't know, I don't know what to do. But like I said, I'm, I'm tired of rebuilding my house over and over again, so. But I have a bunch of videos and pictures, if you guys want that or need it, yeah, I got, I have yours as well. All right, please, sir.
Thank you. Next.
I'm sorry, can you get your last name again?
Mine? Line on?
What was it?
Yes, L O N G, I N O T T I. Uh, we got a rest on the line.
Thank you.
My name's Stephanie Duncan, I live at three oh seven Cameron Drive in Caraway Valley. Um, I approached the city council five years ago about this same problem that has still been ongoing since I talked to you back in twenty twenty. Um, we flood every time it rains. Not just once a year or once every other year, every time it rains. It has gotten worse since they built more houses along the creek, along the golf course, because they built a levee and raised all these houses. But they did not increase the size, size of the drainage ditch for stormwater. It's still three foot wide. That's it. My biggest issue is that we continue the one that people build. I believe the last time I came in front of this council, I was requesting that you stop building on a former lot across the street from us. Because before they built this house there, there was constantly water, there was never drop, it was always flooding. And the other night, at eleven fifty something PM, I called nine one one, they called me back. Because I was concerned that they were going to ever wash the water. It was the deepest this water's ever been, deepest it's ever been, it was three feet from my back door. My house was an island, surrounded by water, and I had nowhere to go. We allow these people to build more houses along the creek, build up a levee so their houses were protected, but then it prevented our houses from draining properly. So our problem that we had before is now a hundred times worse. Your one hundred year flood zone is now a, a twice a year flood zone in our neighborhood. And the more you allow people to build subdivisions that drain into those same creeks, the more we flood. Our doc told me when I called to request information about drainage from one twelve, when they widened the highway outside of our subdivision, informed me that all the culverts that they put in will drain into those same creeks. Which means it drains into our neighborhood. I asked you guys five years ago to help us, we need our drainage ditches expanded. We need people to stop building houses that prevent our subdivision from draining. And we need your support. We have families that live in our subdivision that were lied to when we bought those properties and told that we were not in a flood zone. I still told them not in a flood zone, but mine, my property floods every time it rains. Because of some study that was done by an incumbent engineer, not by you. I requested that you do a new study, but it's never been done. I'm a taxpayer just like any other property owner in that subdivision. And I asked five years ago for someone to come and study and figure out how we can improve the drainage in this subdivision. Nothing was done. And then I was told, well, he's changed this property line, and they're building these new things. He's gonna have to improve the drainage ditch on the south side of the subdivision. That has never happened, ever. It's still the same with the one-